Okay, one for the money. Call a meeting in order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thanks for coming, everybody. Rainy, cool day. Almost felt like we should go duck hunting.
I'm in.
You're in?
Yes.
Limit out. Uh, roll call, please.
Sandy Kufelt.
Here.
Crystal Regan.
Here.
Kristi Hilton.
Here.
Artie Bryson.
Here.
Cindy Valentine.
Here.
Joanne Shorkey.
Here.
Mark Burchard.
Uh, absent excuse. Alright, we have bills payable, entertain a motion.
I make a motion to pay the bills payable in the amount of sixty-six thousand, seven hundred, one dollars and ninety-five cents.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yep.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shorkey.
Yes.
Sandy Kufelt.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Do we have any public comments? Any public comments? Seeing none. Any public comments? Seeing none. We just had some public walk-in, that's why. Alright, moving right along, consent agenda. Entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the board meeting of April seventeenth, two thousand seventeen, meeting and synapses, check reports, L-4029 tax rate request, excuse me, information provided by the assessor, notice, Saint Clair County Road Commission, public hearing set on June sixth, two thousand seventeen, for the Muskrat Run Ainsworth name change, donation of Muskrat signs letter, communication, letter of resignation, Mary Jane Hardy, library, Richard Wagner, DDA, Aaron Huber, Safer for the fire department.
I'll support that, and I would, uh, like, say...
Yeah, I'm gonna read them, my supervisor's report, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Moving right along. Supervisor's report. Hey, Mike, how are ya? Just in time for the supervisor's report. Alright, let's see, it's been a long two weeks, but we're still watching and working with FEMA on any proposed changes they're gonna have, and, believe me, we're watching that very, very close, and if there is any, anything new, I will be the first to report it. We did close on the House at fifty-two forty-four Point Trumbull Drive, uh, road, on April twenty-seventh. We do have vacancies now on two of our boards, the library board and our DDA board. And I just wanted to mention, actually, Jane Hardy, um, she, she did resign, she's moving out of the, um, the, um...
Township.
Township, yes, our community, and, uh, she's actually been on the library board for over twenty-five years, and I just want to, uh, and she, she was a very hard-working worker at it, and very diligent, and very thorough.
Very loyal.
Very loyal.
Very loyal person, yes.
And I believe her husband, too, served on a couple of our boards, too, so...
Yes, I, I served on one of them, and I don't remember whether it was the ZBA or the planning or something, but, but he was active, too.
Right.
Good people.
So, I just wanted to mention that. Mary Jane, you're gonna be missed. So anyhow, back to, we do have a, a spot to fill on our library board and on our DDA board. If anyone would like to, uh, serve on either one of those boards, please get ahold of me, shoot me an email. I do, do have one person that's interested on the DDA board, but, uh, nonetheless, if anyone's interested, please let me know. Uh, we put some turtle crossing signs up on the Dyke Road, and we are going to put some more up on Harson's Island, and, um, I, from what I gather, they're well-received, um, and, uh, ch-ch-ch. What, oh, I mean, the story behind the story, I guess, with that, is when I went to order these signs, I, I asked the owner of the company, I said, "I think," yeah, I'm visualizing, "I think the turtle sign is actually a little too small." He goes, "No, Artie, that's the standard size." I said, "Well, okay, go for it." The day after we put 'em up, he drove by, he called me up, "Artie, you're right, they're too small." So he's actually making us two larger ones for the first two going each way, and he's gonna do it for free, so, kudos to him. And I do have, uh, a, a few of them ordered for Harson's Island. Hopefully, get those in here next week and, uh, get them up. Also, as mentioned in our consent agenda, June sixth, uh, the, um, Saint Clair County Road Commission's having a meeting here, so if you have any complaints about any of our county roads, swerve out, swerve out, um, you can come here and, and voice your opinions, and also, they are holding a public hearing on the name change of Ainsworth to Muskrat And also on that, I wanted to mention, too, that somebody did, actually, they called me up, and, uh, uh, that, uh, can you read that? I can't read her...
Artie, it is with pride and honor, we send you the check to cover the cost for the Muskrat Run street signs. Um, I can't read what that says.
Uh, something about, she's a Muskrat, been a Muskrat for a long time. Anyhow...
Keep up the good work, Fred and, uh...
Yep, we raised one.
Loback, or Leback?
Yeah, she raised a Muskrat herself.
And we love many.
And loved many. Yeah, she called me up and then thought it was a great idea, asked me what they cost, I goes, "They're seventy-five bucks a piece," so, she came and she gave us a hundred and fifty bucks for the signs, so, that was pretty awesome of Barbara, and I thank you for that. I just wanna let everybody know. Uh, Merrill Street Bridge, it's not gonna start till May fifteenth. Originally, they were looking at May first. Uh, they, they could've started, but there was a problem with getting some of their materials, and I didn't want a situation where they start, they pull the bridge out, and now we're sitting and waiting for materials to show up. So they're gonna have a start date around May fifteenth. They're not gonna start until they get all the materials here that they need to complete the project, so it'll be, and it has to be done by June thirtieth. So, um, once they start, they're giving me about a timeline of two, two and a half weeks. They are gonna keep it open, one, at least one lane each way, so, uh, there will be, uh, you know, you'll be able to get it back and forth across it. It's, uh, gonna be a one-way, but, uh, I just didn't want them to, uh, start it and then be in the standstill, waiting for a couple, three weeks with, you know, one lane. So, it's still gonna happen, and it will be done by June thirtieth. Um, Crystal Regan, Cindy Valentine, myself, we attended a workshop meeting at the Emergency Management Oper, the Emergency Operations Center up at the airport, Saint Clair County Airport, and it was very good, it was, uh, it was interesting, uh, it was well-attended. I know they had two of them, total, it was for, geared for public officials, and they kinda hit on, on the process, if there's a disaster or a significant event, on, uh, what our responsibilities are, and what, if any, gaps we have in, in fulfilling it, uh, if there's a disaster. We definitely have some work to do, and it, it was, it was okay meeting, so, just wanna let everyone, we did go to that. Proud to, uh, announce that Clay Township was one of thirty-one municipalities that received our, um, Loss Control Achievement Award from the MML Workers Comp Fund. Yay! I think it's like the third or fourth year in a row, and we got this, and we're thirty-one out of eight-hundred-ninety-nine, we'll just say nine-hundred municipalities. And, uh, so, we're doing something right, we're at least not getting hurt, so that's a good thing. So that's something to be proud of, and we get lower rates because of, on our work comp.
Fantastic.
Um, yes, it's definitely a money saver. I can't remember, I think, uh, when we re-upped it, we, we probably saved about thirty grand or so on, on it, just because of our decent, you know, our record low loss rate. Um, cleanup weekend, Saturday, June third, on the mainland and on Harson's Island, it's June third and fourth, Saturday and Sunday. June third is going to be eight to four, behind the water department on Ainsworth, student and B, Muskrat Run, and on Harson's Island, on the third and fourth, it's gonna be Brown's Field. Uh, again, it's from eight to four. So, save all your stuff, clean your garages out, and let's clean up the township a little bit. It's always kind of a fun, uh, event. Uh, upcoming events, we have Boats for Vets, uh, July twenty-second, and we need boats for there to give a vet a ride, I'll talk to you guys more about it. Um, it, it's a, it's a good event, and we do have a Frag Myths Workshop, May thirteenth, right here at the Hall, from ten to eleven. And we did have, I do have a couple other things coming up, I forgot them on my desk, and I'll wait for next time. So, that's my report. Glad you could get it, Mike. Glad you made it. Uh, next we have Fire Chief's Report. George, you wanna tell us what's going on with the fire department? You've been busy the last few weeks, I know.
Yeah. Um, I attended one meeting for the month of April, it was Saint Clair County Chiefs Association, uh, meeting. Uh, some of the things that were brought up were concerns about the eight-hundred megahertz pagers, uh, they were having some issues with them. Some of the personnel are losing, they're losing signals. Some people are getting the pages, some people standing next to each other are not getting the pages, so that was one of the problems with these new pagers that we received. We've had, uh, not too many problems with ours. The thing that we, uh, do have, had a problem with, when dispatch would put the tone out, we would not get it over our preps. So if we didn't have our pagers with us and we carried our preps, we would not get that signal. Uh, thanks to Chief Coach and the dispatchers now, uh, we have that, where they can patch us, and we'll get that signal along with, um, the, uh, message over our radios now, to where we didn't get it before. Under the old system, they would just, uh, put out the page with the old pagers, we would get that signal, and, uh, we would also get it over our preps, but, uh, now, we are getting it. Um, I also attended the, uh, three-hundred class, a portion of that, that was held here at the, the police department, uh, put on by the Saint Clair County Emergency Management, Homeland Security, uh, Mike, Mark White and Craig Miller were the instructors, they did a very good, uh, job on the class, excellent job. We completed our control burns on Stewart Road and on Harson's Island, the old pheasant farm. We also have another location on La Croix that a resident is requesting us to, uh, to burn a section over there. All the compressor bottles, uh, that we have for cascade system, for compressed air on the island and on the mainland, there's a total of twelve bottles. They are out of hydrostatic test, apparently, they've been out for two years now, so, uh, I do have the company, they're gonna get me a quote on, uh, taking care of that. Um, another thing I would like to, uh, put in the paper, and also on the sign out front, uh, the Clay Township offices, and possibly on the back of the water bills, uh, we are accepting applications for the Clay Township and Harson's Island Fire Department. This would increase our candidate pool, and, uh, you know, it would be a good start to start, uh, trying to bring some people onto the department. I also received a letter of resignation from, uh, Aaron Hubert, as you, uh, did mention. Uh, he's going up to North Port Fire Department, and, uh, that's in northern Michigan, northern lower Michigan, on the west side of the state. Uh, he will be leaving, uh, the thirteenth, this is his last day for this month. I included a, after-action report, uh, from, uh, the Homeland Security and Emergency Management, that's on the, uh, windstorm that we had on March eighth of last month, or, I should say, two months ago. Uh, and it gives you an idea of what occurred in the county for that day, and it points out the good things, the bad things, the areas where we need to improve, and this is put on by the UOC, uh, where you, uh, you guys had a tour of. Also, on, uh, April twenty-sixth, the fire department, uh, fire department and the Harson's Island Fire Department, Clay Township, mainland Fire Department, along with Ira Township and the City of Algenac responded to a structured fire at the old club. With the quick actions of the old club employees and personnel from the Harson's Island Station, the quick extinguishment of the fire prevented a much larger loss. So by the employees and also by the firefighters, uh, it could've been a potential, it could've been a, a much larger...
Saved one.
Yep.
And it was a windy day, too, so...
Yes, it was.
If it got crazy, it would've been trouble.
We would've been in trouble, so...
Yep.
Quick actions, saved the building. Also, I attended the FDIC, uh, last week, uh, learned a lot of stuff, seen a lot of new equipment. I did learn a, a couple of things, uh, I talked to the rep from the, uh, Scott Air Pack Company, and he said that possibly, it's right now in, in committee with the DOT, possibly they might extend the life of our fire glass wrap bottles, as you've been told, uh, that these bottles are coming due next year, there's like seventy bottles. Hopefully, that'll buy us some time to where we can put in a grant, uh, to replace those packs and those bottles.
Is that at the state level, or is that, is it...
It's, it's national.
National, okay.
Yeah.
Maybe I can help that.
Some of the other things, too, as far as purchasing, uh, new fire trucks, um, Pierce Fire Truck Company is under the state contract, Mitten, so if we ever do decide to purchase new fire apparatus, we can go through Mitten if we so choose, uh, and that's under a state, state contract. That's it.
Good. Any questions for George? Thank you much.
Keep up the good work.
Thanks, George.
Yeah. Alright, uh, new business, set budget workshop dates. Uh, need a motion and vote on it for May, we're looking at May eleventh and May eighteenth at noon. And they are public, uh, anyone can come and do these. I'll make a motion that we set, uh, budget workshop meeting dates for Thursday, May eleventh, and Thursday, May eighteenth at noon, here at the Township Hall.
Support.
Okay, a motion of support, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries. Next we have to set a public hearing date, uh, or a, a budget public hearing date, June nineteenth at seven o'clock, that's right before our, our regular meeting. Uh, so if anyone else wants to have an input on the budget, they, so, Jews, too, they can do it then. So I'll make a motion, we, uh, set the budget public hearing date, June nineteenth at seven o'clock PM.
Support.
Okay, we got motion and support, any discussion? Hearing none, uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Okay, third thing, we have discussion of Fire Commissioner.
Can I, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
The, the public hearing date of June the nineteenth?
Yep.
Um, so that'll be at our regularly scheduled meeting?
Yeah, right before it.
Which is, I believe that one's scheduled to be on the island, is it?
Is it?
No.
Or it's not?
Next, our next meeting is on the island.
Next meeting is on the island.
I had that wrong, thank you.
Yep. So, uh, I know we, uh, tentatively appoint, or, we, uh, appointed Mr. Horvath as our Fire Commissioner interim for a few months. Uh, Mark Burchard also, um, who isn't here right now, expressed a lot of interest of being a, a Fire Commissioner, um, and I'll just tell everyone, I, truthfully, myself, I don't think we really need a Fire Commissioner. Um, and it was about eight, nine years ago, when, uh, I think Joanne was the first one that was appointed, right, Joanne?
Yes.
Uh, back then, I think Jay, it was Jay DeBoer that did it, because we were having a not-good communications with, with the Fire Chief at that point. Um, and, uh, I think we have very good communications with George, myself, and, and Cindy, and he's in the office two, three times a, a day. Sometimes I think, you know, he works here and not down the road, I'm just kidding, but, uh, so we, we have very good communication. I, myself, I don't see the need for it, but, uh, it's a board decision. Um, one thing it, I, I wanted to point out, uh, the Fire Commissioner, uh, if a township has to establish a fire department, it may be advisable to appoint a member of the township board to act as Fire Commissioner, to serve as a liaison between the board and the fire department. So it's, it's gotta be a board member, or, we probably shouldn't even have done John Horvath.
I couldn't say it has to be a board member.
Uh, sir, yes, does. And, um...
It may be.
It may be a, well, you, no, you may, may appoint. But, uh, um, I mean, we don't have a Police Commissioner, and, uh, there again, it says, if township does organize a Police Department, Township Board may appoint one of its members as a Police Commissioner, to act as a liaison between the Township Board and the Police Department. Uh, this should be, operate the same manner as the Fire Commissioner. I, myself, personally, think less government is better, if, uh, you can operate that way, and I, I think, you know, my own personal opinion is, is, we can, and if, six months, three months from now, we feel necessary to have a Fire Commissioner, we can appoint one then.
And at any time, any member of the Board of Trustees can go down...
Right.
Go down to the Fire Department if they, you know, wanna talk to George, or...
Right.
George comes here and gives a good report, so...
So, that's my own personal opinion.
This is new information to me. I don't have any knowledge, working knowledge, really, um, with the chief, with some of the, the officers of the Fire Department, nor my fellow board members, I haven't discussed this with anybody, so, um, if you would prefer a vote on the Fire Commissioner, I'd request that you at least give us two weeks.
Sure.
So I can tune up my information.
Well, I think...
I have my own opinions, but we're here to represent the population, so...
Right. Oh, yeah, there was really no vote necessary, I, Mr. Horvath's appointment just, is over with at the end of April.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, so right now, May first, we don't have a Fire Commissioner.
Okay.
So...
So I guess, Chris, if you wanna look into it, and should you do that, and feel that you think that we should, you can always let me know, I'll put, place it back on the agenda, and we can make a motion to reappoint.
Right.
I, I should've looked at what our term limits, when we, when we voted him in.
Yeah, we gave him a three-month.
Fair enough.
Yep. But it does say that, you know, you may appoint a member, you know, you don't have to have a Fire Commissioner, but it basically says if you do, it's gotta be someone from our board, so...
Okay.
So, do you, um, have a, make a motion to postpone it, or...
What are we...
Well, you're just giving information, right?
Yeah.
This is not a voting?
Right, no.
You don't have one, so...
So I think we're good.
Okay, we're good. Any more discussion on it? Okay, hearing none. Move right along to, uh, the Deputy Treasurer's stipend. Um, we brought this up about a month ago, that, uh, while we didn't have a sitting treasurer, uh, we also don't have a sitting deputy treasurer, but, uh, so we couldn't pay her to the deputy But as you can see, uh, the email from Anita, uh, she, you know, in her mind, she did a bunch of work as, you know, the deputy treasurer, and we brought it up, um, and the board asked me if it was legal to do, you know, to pay her, and, uh, we did get, uh, opinion from our legal attorney, yes, uh, you could possibly categorize, you could say it's, uh, for general accounting services and not the deputy treasurer's stipend. And, uh, then there was questions if it was gonna be a problem with the union, and, uh, we had got a email from the agent of the union, and it says this is outside the scope of the contract, and it's not a union issue. So both of those, uh, concerns were addressed, so I'll leave it up to the board to do what it wishes to do.
I'm not completely satisfied with the answer from the union, 'cause all he says is it's outside of the scope of the contract, and to me, his impression then is that he's thinking it's treasurer pay.
Uh, let's see...
I mean, it, she's only, she gets paid as an admin, correct?
Yes.
And as a deputy treasurer?
Yes.
So if it's outside the scope of the contract for her admin position?
Not, not the admin part, the deputy treasurer's outside the contract.
Right.
The admin is what's covered by the union.
Yes. So the union representative that's answering this email says it looks like it is outside the scope of the contract and not a union issue. So is he thinking that it is a deputy treasurer issue?
Yes.
We cannot pay her deputy treasurer pay?
Or, or if we paid her some other type of a stipend. No, there was, he's saying if we paid her hourly rate, you know, adjusted it, you know, uh, the other people in the union would say, "Hey, well, you know, what about me?" and, and everything, that's what we're not doing. We, she didn't get her normal stipend, and we wanted to, or she felt that she deserved it, and, uh, you know, there's, there's a way that, if the board so chooses to give her that, um, we have a vehicle to do that. Like I said before, I don't think it was her fault that our, our treasurer did resign, and quite honestly, she probably, she's, basically did a large portion of the treasurer's job in the past year, and I'm sure she's been a great help to you so far, right?
Yes.
So I think she deserves the two-hundred bucks.
I understand that, Artie, and I, it, it's not that I don't feel that Anita deserves the two-hundred dollars, however, we have a union, and these girls feel comfortable with the union for a certain reason. Um, you said in here that you can ask the girls, they are all in favor of her getting the additional compensation, and I haven't found that to be true. Um, in fact, both of them, I asked about it today, um, did not have any communication from anyone about it.
No? I mean, I've talked to them. Um, I mean, it's been a month, but not recently.
And one of them was pretty upset about it, to see that it was on the agenda again. So I'm a little concerned that this is gonna cause more issues with inner department relationships than we already have.
Okay, well, that's new, news to me.
This is such an unusual kind of situation, with the losing our, you know, resignation of our treasurer, and then automatically, she was not the deputy, but it was okay, and plus, her sister passed away right in that same week, and she had to go to a funeral, and then the bank gets involved, saying that it's okay to sign those checks, what, post-datum?
They were approved, dated and approved, the date, they were approved.
Right.
And they just needed her second signature.
Right.
And at that time, she was still deputy treasurer. So because they were dated...
But she went to a funeral, so she didn't come in to sign it and tell...
Correct.
So I'm, I'm saying it, so all kinds of, um...
But she was also paid for that. She was paid for that first day that we had that meeting, and approved them.
So she was paid the... So she was paid the day that the bills payable were approved? She was paid to sign the checks, she just did not sign them that day 'cause she was not here?
Correct.
She was on funeral leave.
Right. So she was paid for those treasure, deputy treasurer duties from the 27th?
Out of the two weeks pay that is in question, she was paid for one day out of it. She was not here the first week of that two weeks. Because the resignation became effective starting on Tuesday, so she was paid for Monday. She was not here Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
And what date was that?
It was effective the 28th, so the 27th was a Monday, and she was paid for that day.
Mm-hmm.
And her bills were approved that day, signed by me that day. She was just at a funeral and did not come in, and I asked the bank if that was going to be a problem, and they said, no, they were approved, dated, just needed the second signature. On that day, she was the acting treasurer.
'Cause she says, you know, she did duties according to Anita, you know, March 6th, March 7th, March 9th, that were also, you know, fall under the deputy treasurer's scope.
So was she authorized? Was she authorized to do these duties that were under the deputy treasurer's scope?
Yeah.
Did someone tell her to do them?
If not, I mean, we're transferring money and things?
She shouldn't have been transferring any money.
No?
We didn't do any payroll. The DDA is not under statutory duties of the treasurer.
So for approximately a whole week...
Special assessment bills, I believe, are more under the assessor than they would be the statutory duties of the treasurer.
Special assessment bills were printed and mailed, not as treasurer, they collect the money. And printed delinquent property tax bills and stuffed and mailed, that's also treasurer. Multiple communications with auditors regarding the Athena investment and banking questions, that's definitely treasurer. Communications with St. Clair County Treasurer's Office regarding penalty to Elgnax schools attached, 'cause we didn't pay it in time. And posted trailer court fees payment received by the trailer court. Again, that's still treasurer's, collecting money. So I'm just trying to do what's right.
So she was doing all that, we could categorize that as just general accounting things?
Yeah.
But because she was, for one, the one week she was legally not the deputy?
Yeah.
One week?
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Seven of the eight days, she was paid for one of them.
Okay. So then, seven days, which to me is a week, you know, but... So if we took away the deputy stipend for that, which would be, what, $57 or whatever it is when you divide it out, and then pay her for the other days, I mean, the other duty, the other general accounting, subtract it from, what do you say, Artie, $200 you're talking, or something?
Yeah, it was $208.67.
And give her $140 or something for those duty, those days, because she wasn't back as the deputy treasurer until the 13th of March. To, it's such a conglomeration of things that we did something to that effect. I mean, this is just my own thinking on it. And put it to bed and move on.
Thank you, yeah.
I'm all for putting it to bed.
Yeah, me too.
This is $208, and we've talked about this far too long.
Yeah.
Are you suggesting that we prorate?
Well, the deputy stipend...
For the day she worked?
The deputy stipend, if you divide 3,500 by 52 weeks?
Yep.
Is what, comes out to 50-some dollars, $57 or something like that. Pull that off and give her the $140 left, or whatever Artie was saying, $200, but to figure out some way that we can put this thing to bed, and being as legal as possible and as fair as possible, because she was doing work.
She was made aware she wasn't the deputy treasurer once she returned to work, correct?
Correct.
Did you make her aware?
I did. She wanted to cut checks, and I told her she could not.
Mr. Supervisor, does this require a vote?
Yeah, for us to pay.
Can you put something on the table, please, so we can either vote and move on, and it's a yes or a no?
I'll make the motion that we pay Anita Rezepa $208.67 as for general accounting services provided while we did not have a deputy treasurer in seating. Is there any support? Got support? Any discussion?
I think we discussed it enough.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Royson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine?
No.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next we have, to ratify, we have tentative agreement with patrol union contract. I did highlight the changes that changed in the contract, and actually been operating under this contract since July 1. I just had a hard time getting it in paper and the changes before us, and then had, we could've gotten it in the last meeting, but we had, I think, 15 things on that agenda, so... It's before you, is there any questions or anything? We changed our flex, and we did this across the board before. People had had flex times, they had to charge, take two hours flex time. I personally, we don't have a problem with them just taking one hour versus two, and, you know, we changed that in the contract. We, instead of days for vacation, we converted that into hours, and that the employees, they can cash in vacation time twice a year if they so do choose to, instead of banking it, which actually helps the township.
They can only cash in what they've accrued, right?
Right. Right. And then the health plan, where they contribute their monthly co-pays and their pay scale, which is 2% per year increase.
Artie, a question I have is, where is the sign, the signature of the...
On the back.
Yeah, but it's dated.
That's the old contract.
That's the old?
Yeah, but we're...
But we're gonna sign a new, we'll have a new sign... This is the letter of understanding for healthcare.
Yes, I understand that.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
But...
From the...
It's in here somewhere.
From effect of July 1st, 2013 through the 16th.
Signature page will be here, it's not on the second to last page, but we haven't, you haven't authorized me to sign it yet and send you the sign.
Okay, okay.
I have a concern with them cashing out time for one reason only. Aside from the fact that, you know, we pay them, and then we pay them out their vacation. So from a financial standpoint, it is somewhat of a concern, because it's more that needs to go into the budget for the police department. However, my biggest concern about that is that they have vacation time to use it, not staying here, getting burned out. Thankfully, we're not as critical of the burnout department as any other places, but I don't like to see employees not using their vacation time. I don't like to see them put in a situation where they can understand that there is a shortage of officers, but they'll still work 'cause they know they can get paid out for it, because they know they're really needed there. They also really need to take their time.
Mm-hmm.
That was always a concern of mine also.
Right.
I had, I had stated that before, but consensus seems to be the other way around, so...
Oh, it does help us if they accrue a bunch of vacation time, then they say they're gonna leave five years from now, we pay them out how many hours, 500 hours or whatever they have. We're paying them at a higher rate as if, because, you know, five years from now, or three years from now, or whatever, they're gonna be making more per hour. So financial way we do, if we pay it out when it's earned, it's more, it's cheaper for the township. In other words, you know, they could be making two, three bucks more an hour when they cash it out if they don't use it. We don't have a...
But this also says that they have to use half of it to roll it over.
Right.
So are we considering when they pay it out that they've used half of it?
It's either way.
That makes no sense.
But I know we did the same thing for command and dispatch, so...
And this says there shall be no payoff for unused vacation time, so we don't have to worry about paying it off down the road. Limited vacation carry forward, one-half earned vacation must be taken for the remainder to be banked. I don't have an issue with that, other than I would say that they would need to utilize half of their vacation to roll it, that hours cashed out should not be counted toward that. And I would like to see that in there.
Okay, we'll bring it back next meeting. That's the board's decision.
Can I get some clarification on that?
Mm-hmm.
So let me, let me pose a hypothetical. Let's take, two calendar year is entitled to 120 hours of vacation, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's three weeks?
It's 10, 10 days.
It's 10 days.
They work 12-hour days.
So we're gonna split that, five for the first six months, five for the second six months?
How do you accrue it?
I don't know how they do their accrual over there. I think they just...
Chief, am I on to, am I talking logical?
The way the vacation time works is as you see it right there, is like you're using, for instance, 120 hours.
Yeah.
And in order for them to be able to cash it out, it's gotta have to be something that's gotta be approved by myself as well. And as far as the burnout or anything goes, that's my job to keep an eye on that and make sure that that doesn't happen, which with anything else, I try to keep my finger on the pulse with all the people that are over there that are working, to make sure that that is something that's not gonna happen. We, luckily, I've got a crew that loves coming to work. They like being here, they like working. But with that comes, I mean, obviously, we, this year, it's been a little tougher because we have had manpower issues, so they've really stepped up to the plate, and that's something, you know, that I can't say enough about. I don't, I have not seen anything as far as burnout with anybody like that, but you gotta understand that as they can accrue this time, they can bank up to 294 hours of vacation time per contract. 294 hours, a lot of hours. And I guess we're, me and Artie were looking at this, was if that's something that they keep in that bank, and they keep that accrued up to the point where they end up terminating their employment here, we have to pay them that out. They don't just lose that. So we're looking, do we offset that a little bit here opposed to down the line? That's kind of the approach that we took to it, was trying to offset it now instead of down the line where we get hit, could be another $3 an hour that we're paying on top of something that we gave at, you know, a much lower rate.
I get it.
Hey, today's rates versus tomorrow's.
Correct.
I understand.
So that was kind of our way of trying to do that, 'cause I've been here back in the day where, and that's where if you look now, we put a cap of 294 as far as vacation time in the contract. Reason being is, we had some people that retired out with seven, 800 hours.
Mm-hmm.
And they had earned that, some of that, at probably half the rate of what they were now being paid off. So kind of a, kind of a hit for the township.
Start the retirement six months early.
Right.
Theoretically.
Yeah.
At full pay.
Right.
And it sort of prevents, or at least keeps that in check?
Yes. And that's, you know, like I say, with me, that's where I've gotta be on top of it. And well, when it comes down to any of these decisions, as far as anybody wants to cash out vacation time, roll vacation time over, convert sick time into vacation time, anything like that, it comes across my desk first. And first and foremost, it's gonna be a point of keeping the finger on the pulse and making sure, just as Cindy said, that we're not gonna have any kind of burnout with people. Because first and foremost, that's the last thing that we want. Everybody needs time off. So with this, I don't see that being a problem, but it's a point of, we just gotta, you know, do our due diligence in making sure that there's not an issue there.
So in addition to the 294 hours that are in the contract?
Yep.
We're supplementing that contract with this amendment?
This would keep them, if they so choose, it's gonna keep them from building that 294 hours.
Okay.
It's gonna keep them from hitting that mark. So instead of, okay, I can roll over and have a bank of almost $300, well, now I can use it to take care of this, or take care of that, or whatever else there is with it, instead of carrying this time over, which by contract they can do. I think it's just a, it is something to kind of entice them to, let's not, let's not us accrue unfunded liability down the road.
We're only talking, they can cash in at least 20 hours, but not more than 40 hours of vacation time.
And I think you're seeing a lot more and more agencies that are doing just that, because they're trying to stay away from that unfunded liability on the other end.
Mm-hmm.
So it's an option. As of right now, I think you'll probably only see not even a third of the department take advantage of it.
Everybody else will take their days?
Yeah, pretty much.
I appreciate the clarification.
Absolutely.
Any other questions, or...
No, when, if she keeps an eye on it, then it comes over here to administration, and they can, you keep an eye on it also.
Mm-hmm.
So like a check and balance kind of thing.
31-2, it says that the one-half of earned vacation must be taken for the remainder to be banked, and by taken, they mean utilized, not cashed out. Correct.
Say that once again.
Says one-half of the earned vacation must be taken for the remainder to be banked. So by taken, not cashed out.
Correct. And that's, and that's where we'll state is they will have to use half of their vacation time before they can even cash the other half off. Correct, and that's where it'll stay, is they will have to use half of their vacation time before they can even cash the other half off. They'll be able to either cash half of that out or carry half of that over. It would be a point where they say, okay, if you could take this whole bank out and then cash it out.
Well, I understand, I just want it clarified in the language, that's all. That's what I want to see. Because we have a lot of contracts out there that have some gray areas and holes, so I just want to make sure that it's clear on that.
And pretty much that's exactly what that means is, they have to utilize half that vacation before anything else is done.
So they're getting their rest.
I'll make the motion that we approve the agreement between Clay Township and the Police Officers Labor Council Patrol with Police Officers Labor Council, okay, I already said that. Effective July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2000, it should be 19. Three-year contract.
16 through 19.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I think I said the wrong thing, too.
Yep. So I got a motion.
Support.
You have support, any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. I have work orders from the St. Clair County Road Commission. We have mowing our shoulders and ditches, that's two cuts, $6,498. And what we do, we'll go ahead of them and do one path. And then they can reach longer or wider, and then they'll come behind us. So we get a lot wider cut than a lot of communities do, just to let you guys know. And these are kind of like blanket orders, we really don't hit the fifth, like, we have seal patch various roads, $15,000. We'll probably do 7, 8,000 of that. Two applications of 21% chloride, 2,000 gallons a mile, that's 9,400, we will use that. Shoulder maintenance as needed on the roads, that's 6,500. Rubber crack, or rubber crack repairs various roads, that's 25,000. That we usually come in about 13,000 to 15,000, but I want it in our budget in case we need it. And then the stone hauls, we have one at $30,284. And additional one that we have match money, it would cost the township $4,997 for a total of $35,281. And I wanted to mention that that second one is gonna hit Volks, Columbine, Crispin Road. That stone, that usually costs us 19, almost 20,000. And we're getting a match, and basically it's $20,000 plus we kick in, you know, 5,000. Basically, we're getting $25,000 worth of stone for a cost of 5,000 bucks with the new county program that, what they, they basically said, you gotta spend what you've normally been spending. They see a need that a lot of townships should be putting more stone on the roads than we have been. And as I said, if you already maintain what you've normally been spending, we will give you additional 75%, 25% match for additional stone.
Fantastic.
So up to 20 grand, and that's a heck of a deal. So we jumped on that. And if you've been on Crispin Road, that's a very important road. In other words, it really is a shortcut from the South Channel to the Middle Channel, Harson's Island. And if there's a fire or emergency on the Middle Channel, if that road's in bad shape, we can't use it, which sometimes it is, it's probably, what, another 10 minutes? Going around the long way. And especially on both ends, I mean, you build a road across the swamp, you're gonna have issues. And that's basically what it is. And Joanne can attest, we were just down there not too long ago, too. It is well, well-needed, so...
And it, like you said, it's important, it's a cut through.
So we're looking for a motion to approve the work orders as presented.
Can we total these all together?
Uh, yeah.
I do. Can we do the motion with them all together?
Yeah, exactly.
I'll make a motion to approve the St. Clair County work orders as presented totaling $97,679.31.
Support.
Yeah, motion of support, any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes. Motion carries. Next we have Resolution 2017-13, grant application for voting equipment. You wanna tell everyone what that's about, Cindy?
With the new voting equipment the state of Michigan is putting out, the majority of the costs are going to be covered by the state of Michigan. The difference was going to leave some money owed by the township, and one of the vendors has reduced his price to be more more compatible with the other bids that came into the state. So as of right now, the state is actually paying for all of the new voting equipment that we will have for our next election, not tomorrow, for the next one. But we do have to pass the resolution, authorize me to be able to sign for the grant. I don't have a total yet because they don't, they haven't taken any of the orders until we approve the grant application, so... I will make a motion to approve Resolution 2017-13, the grant application for the new voting system for the township of Clay.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion of support, roll call vote, please.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next we have the appointment of a construction board of appeals. State statute says we're required to have a construction board of appeals if someone doesn't like how... Let me see what we have here. And this board has not met in Clay Township since 2004, but we need to have it. And again, the people are, they're appointed by the supervisor, approved by the board. They hear any appeals on decisions made by our building enforcement, only on how the state building code is enforced, on basically how it's interpreted. And that's what they're there for. And we're supposed to have people that are familiar with the voting court, building codes within the township and with a background in the construction. And I'm wanting to appoint Joe Stevenson of Stevens, Joe Stevenson Builders, Inc., Marrow Road, Tom Prokowski of Tom Phillips Homes, Inc., John Moni, Project Control Engineering, Randy Byer of Hunter Electric, Gary White of White Heating and Cooling, and Greg Stiltner of Greg Stiltner Plumbing. And they also said it's, you want people from the, you know, you want construction, you want heating and cooling, you want plumbing and electrical.
Do we have letters from all of these?
Yes, I...
Letters of interest?
I do, but I didn't put them in the packet.
Are you looking for support?
Yes.
Support.
Okay, a motion of support, any more discussion? Just wanna thank everyone, but everyone, you know, is, like I say, hasn't met since 2004, but we need to have it, so...
Is there a proposed date that you're going to begin meeting?
No, they don't, they don't meet unless there's an appeal brought forward to us.
Gotcha.
So...
That's a solid board.
Oh, yeah.
Residential and commercial, it's...
Yeah.
Got all the trades covered.
Yeah.
Right, and all the trades, all the trades.
So I was happy with it, actually.
Yeah, you bet.
All right, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed, motion carries. Next we have on our agenda Dangerous Building 8536, Anchor Bay Drive. This actually kind of snuck in on me, I have not talked to Sid about it, our building enforcer, or the owners of the property.
No, I had a resident call inquiring as to the status of the building and had inquired with the building department and received this back from them, just saying, it's indicated that it's to turn over to the board if no action. They did apply for a permit to repair the boathouse back in October. It expired this past April 24th. I did go by there, some work has been done.
Yep.
I would like to see that work continue and be finished. However, I would also like to instruct our building department to let them know that their permit has expired with a set time to finish those repairs.
Yeah, there's no problem with do that, we'll, I'll have them do that, and also I'll be contacting the owner myself also, like I normally do. So I guess I'll make a motion to postpone this Dangerous Building on 8536 Anchor Bay Drive.
Support.
Motion of support, any more discussion?
Do you think you can provide some kind of feedback at next meeting?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yep. Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, motion carries. Board member comments, Joanne, how you doing?
I'm doing fine.
Good.
Always good. I don't have any specific thing to mention this, this meeting.
Okay. Cindy?
Next.
I'd like to thank Aaron Huber for his time he spent on our department, it's been much appreciated. Wish him the best in his new position. Brian, who stopped in to see me earlier today over on Point Trumbull, I just want to let him know that I'm still looking into that for him. Discussing it with Artie and a few other folks to get some more information before we can discuss it as a board, if there's any action that needs to be done here. And I want to remind everybody to go out and vote tomorrow. There is a school election, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., which by the time you post this, it'll probably be today.
Sandy?
I do have a couple things. One was to remind everyone to go vote tomorrow, I will be working at the school, the polls, so I look forward to seeing all of our members of the community out there as well. I am an active part of the Algonac Little League and did attend their opening ceremonies on Saturday. And it was a wonderful ceremony, celebrating the first year, we're over 300 players. And they had a flag dedication that was very nice. So I would like everyone to go out and take a look at it and watch some baseball and softball.
Better up.
Also, I just kind of would like to ask the treasurer and the clerk if they could go over job duties and responsibilities with their deputies and make sure that they're aware of what their authority is in certain positions and different situations. So hopefully this type of agenda item doesn't cross our path again. That's all I got. Thank you.
Yes.
Well, Artie, I found our emergency or disaster planning meeting up in Kimball to be very informative. And I always wondered how areas sought and seek assistance from the county level, and then if the disaster or response elevates, they'll seek state-level support. And how the governor makes the decision on whether to declare it a state of emergency. And so the ins and outs of that can all be found, and it starts with Emergency Management Act 390. I thought Jeff Freeland had a neat operations center up there. There were probably 20-plus workstations, and they all had hard phone lines and working computer systems. And they had job boards up on with several monitors. And it's nice to know that the county is spending, you know, tax dollars on emergency readiness plans. So I found that pretty encouraging, really.
Yep.
I want to send Get Well Soon to Mark Burchard, who has undergone some recent things, and we're thinking of you. And we hope to see you back in your seat soon, Mark. And to cap on Sandy's congratulations, the Algonac Little League, there was a a flagpole donated by a Miss Terry Jansen, and it was a memorial for her father and uncle. And in conjunction with the FOP of Algonac, they put this beautiful flagpole in the middle of the diamonds. And as they were raising the flag, they had the color guide from the Detroit Police Department raising the flag. And it got about halfway up, and it was a windy morning, and then it took hold, and that flag just, oh, just ripped out into position. It was, it was awesome.
Cool.
It was awesome. So thank you to Terry Jason and all of the Algonac Little League.
Awesome. Kristy?
I was able to attend the Michigan Municipal Treasures Association training last week, it was very intensive, Sunday evening through Friday afternoon. That's actually a program sponsored by Central Michigan, so a total of three years. And then I will be able to be accredited by the state. So that was exciting, learned lots of information, met a lot of contacts, so good networking, lots of information.
Information overload, I bet.
Overload.
I bet. Thank you. I just wanted to give a shout out for Richard Wagner, he's been on the DDA since it started. So he had a lot of time and a lot of DDA meetings, so we'll miss him. And also, we've talked about Mary Jane Harding, she's just a great gal, that's all I can say. I, myself, have been working a lot on the budget, so I got a lot of numbers going through my head. Saturday, I attended the powwow at the high school from First Nation, that was a pretty cool thing. I go there every year, and Sue Warvo puts it on, and it's a great event. I got my Indian taco, which is awesome. And then they also had the St. John's cleanup, marsh cleanup, Saturday morning, too. And that's always a great event, too. Other than that, vote tomorrow, so be interesting. Our next meeting's gonna be at the Harson's Island Lions Hall, May 15, 2017. Don't we have the public hearing for the soil removal grants that day, too, so... All right, entertain adjournment, motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn, support.
Okay, all in favor, and let's get out of here, thanks a lot for coming, everybody.